Y'all here tonight, and we will call the meeting to order here in just a few minutes. Before we do, I'd ask you to stand and join me in the pledge, then Amelia Williams will bring the invocation, and then we'll have a recognition presentation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that you try to make some strong and valuable decisions for our veterans right now, please help us when we're suffering in our city, and help us to overcome the effects of the pandemic.
Man, thank you, Amelia. All right. I'll now turn it over to Councilman Kevin Flores.
Mic on?
Yes.
All right. So, we got any Marines in the room? I know we're expecting a couple. Come on up to the front, please. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Flores, and thanks again for coming here, for whichever reason you came tonight, but I am honored and very excited to share with y'all the celebration of my favorite day of the year, the Marine Corps Birthday. Now, in front of us, we got two officers who, one, I know decently, the other one, I don't know at all, but what we share in common, we're all part of this breed of the Marine Corps fabric that has represented this country for its entire existence. So here tonight, if y'all can take a seat, here tonight, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna give y'all a quick story that includes some history, we're gonna watch the annual birthday video, which is by the Commandant of the Marine Corps, the Sergeant Major of the Marine Corps, and then we'll cut this cake in a ceremonial way that we traditionally do every year, and then we'll serve all y'all cake, so if you're hungry, don't worry. But, on November 10th, 1775, in the midst of the Revolutionary War, the Continental Congress of the American Colonies passed a resolution authorizing the raising of two battalions' worth of Marines to serve as amphibious landing forces against the British. Now, they tasked a young captain by the name of Samuel Nicholas to raise these battalions. Samuel Nicholas was in his early 30s, and this was a hefty deed to take on, and they left him very little instruction. So, this was in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and I imagine Captain Nicholas asked himself, where can I find two battalions' worth of men that are crazy enough to fight and potentially put their life on the line for this cause? So I'm sure he paced the streets of Philadelphia, and he thought about it some more, until he realized where he could find two battalions' worth of men that are crazy enough to fight and to potentially lay their lives on the line for this cause. It was in a bar. So, he goes to this bar that's called Ton Tavern to recruit these men, and in 1775, a courageous group of Americans assembled in this Philadelphia bar to create what would become the United States Marine Corps. What began as two battalions' worth of scrappy fighters is now the greatest fighting machine that the world has ever known. Two hundred and forty-six years later, we have come a long way as an organization, but two things still hold to be true: once a Marine, always a Marine, and we will always fight for and defend this great nation at all costs. So here, some Marines, here's to honoring another year of our enduring legacy. Happy Birthday. And we're gonna watch this video now, and then afterwards, we'll cut this cake.
Marines were there to defend her.
U.S. officials increasingly worried by the hour.
But our enemies now pose an ever-growing threat to America and our way of life.
Another U.S. Navy warship now in place tonight off the coast, about 250 Marines.
The Marine Corps must be prepared to fight and win. Tonight, Marines around the world proudly celebrate 246 years of defending our great Our warrior lineage in the battles that have been fought and won across generations have Throughout the centuries, the Marine Corps' relentless pursuit of excellence is unchanged. We are still made from the same grit and steel, with the same moral instincts, and the same unending will to fight. Marines remain physically, mentally, and emotionally tough, forged in the crucible to overcome fear and adversity. In these ways, the Corps and the lifelong faith we place in each other is proudly unchanging.
This is as close as we can get to the base of the World Trade Center. You can see the firemen assembled here, the police officers, FBI agents, and you can see the two towers. A huge explosion now raining debris on all of us. We better get out of the way!
On the 11th day of September 2001, our country was attacked.
And the people who knocked these buildings down will get all of us.
Like the attack on Pearl Harbor 60 years before that day, changed everything.
Our Marines have fought and won in hostile places like Anvar, Singin', Fallujah, Hellman, Mosul. We earned our reputation as an elite counterincidence force, but that remains only a part of who we are.
After five days of heavy fighting, Marines raise our beloved American flag. Let's all bounce everybody!
What Marines are, what Marines have always been, is amphibious warfighters, and the changing battle now requires us to return to our origins, relying on foundations built by the Marines that came before us. The Marine Corps' identity remains the same. Our infantry battalions will remain at the center of what we do, and the Marine and their rifle will continue to be one of the deadliest weapons on the battlefield. But being ready now requires us to return to the seas and shores of maritime terrain.
The history of the Marine Corps is marked by a series of paradigm shifts, and this is one of them. The hard-won lessons of Iraq and Afghanistan and the blood Marines have shed there will not soon be forgotten. We're using the lessons of our past combined with the weapons of the future to reimagine our warfighting capabilities through continuous adaptation and experimentation.
Marines around the globe, Marines like you, are a vital part of this effort. Your ideas, your feedback, will be key to moving the Marine Corps into the future and ensure that we will continue our legacy of winning battles.
And to the Marines who have served our nation and return home to continue to fight and win battles of a different kind in their own communities, we thank you.
As Marine brothers and sisters, Semper Fidellis is a pledge that we promise to live by. The work of our Marine veterans is a living testament to the faith Marines keep with each other, with our Corps, and with our country. The next generation of Marines may operate differently and in different places than the Marines who wear the Eagle Globe and anchor today, but they will join a long and proud heritage of Marine fighters who have never turned from a threat, never turned from an enemy. We will always remain most ready when our nation is least ready, because we must protect our shores and we must protect our citizens. It's still gonna be the Marines who defend this nation.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. I think that... Thank our Marines. You're never too old to learn something new, right? That's great. All right. I'd like to welcome you all again here to this regular meeting in the Springdale City Council, Tuesday, November 9th. I'll call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor's House.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Kevin Flores.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
He's here.
Here. Oh, is Randall on Zoom?
And Mark Fudrus. Okay, Ernest Cate.
Here.
Okay, good deal. Everybody's here. Here or there, we're all accounted for. This is, we're at item five on the agenda. If there are any residents that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, we ask that you go to the microphone and the podium up there, please state your name and address, and keep your comments brief, and the council will take no action tonight on what you bring forward. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that's not on tonight's agenda?
Great. Thank you, Kevin.
All right. We'll move on. Approval of minutes, item six, you've had access to the minutes. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
I'll move.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign. Thank you. Procedural motions, item seven, what is your pleasure, council?
Move A and B.
Second. Got a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fudrus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
All right. Item eight, and I'll read it, is a resolution confirming an appointment to the Springdale Airport Commission of the City of Springdale, Arkansas. I'm recommending, then, the Airport Commission has recommended Cameron McCarron, and Cameron's here tonight. Cameron, give us a wave. And your wife, introduce your wife.
Lee.
Lee, okay. And, anyway, I've read the resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment or questions? Roll call, please.
Fudrus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Cameron, again, thank you very much for your willingness to serve, and we got a great commission, got a great airport, as you know. You've been involved, y'all both have been involved in our airport for a while now, so thank you for taking this step to help serve in that very important position. Thank you. All right. Item nine, Planning Commission reporting recommendations, Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development.
There we go, got it.
Yeah, you're on.
The first item is amendment to the Downtown Form Base Code Regulating Plan. You'll see on the map, there's a highlighted area that includes three parcels located at the corner of Dever and Maple Street. These were originally included as part of the full campus with the hospital, with the anticipation that that might be used as part of the hospital. It has since been purchased by a private owner, and they want to develop it and bring it out of the campus type one and make it a neighborhood center type two. Planning Commission has reviewed this and recommends approval of this amendment to the Downtown Form Base Code Regulating Plan. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending Chapter 32 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, the Downtown District Form Base, revising Section 2.0, the regulating plan, declaring emergency and further purposes."
I'll make a motion, the ordinance, if it's approved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any further questions or comments? Anybody in the room need to speak to this ordinance? Okay, roll call.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fudrus?
Yes.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second. Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fudrus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
And as usual, these carry an emergency clause, because there's pending actions on these pieces of property. The next request is to replat lots 2A, 2B, 2C-1, 2C-2, and 2D of Westfield subdivision. I guess we got them in reverse order, or I got them in reverse order. Go to the other ordinance, maybe it wasn't. It's me. An ordinance accepting the replat of lot 143 of the Apple Orchard subdivision to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. They're replating this to create two lots. This has been done quite some time ago. Planning Commission reviewed this ordinance and recommends approval, and I read the title of the ordinance.
So that's 9B on our agenda, right?
Yeah. The picture's, that's 9B, yes. It's Apple Orchard subdivision, replat of lots of 143. You can see where it is, it's in front of that subdivision, been there quite some time. They're just creating one smaller lot on the west side of this block of property.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fudrus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Move emergency clause. Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second. Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fudrus?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a replat of lots 2A, 2B, 2C-1, 2C-2, and 2D of Westfield subdivision Phase 1. This is actually reducing the number of lots. The Planning Commission has reviewed this replat, recommends approval, and the title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting the replat of lots 2A, 2B, 2C, 2C-1, 2C-2, and 2D of Westfield subdivision Phase 1 to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Move ordinance pass.
And we will address these with large-scale developments and where the access points are gonna be as the large scales come through. It's actually reducing the number of lots.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fudrus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second. Flores?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fudrus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item 10, Finance Committee Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Thank you. The Finance Committee has forwarded two resolutions to the council tonight, both with recommendation for approval. The first resolution has to do with the purchase of certain properties on East Emma Avenue for the purposes of construction of a new senior center. The title to the first resolution at 10A is "A Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Property Located at 900 East Emma Avenue and 102 East Emma Avenue, Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas."
I'll make a motion, the resolution pass.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Other comments or questions?
There was a question that was brought up at committee that I verified, that I told you that I verified, that there are no, Mr. Kasim is here, there's no tenants, other than Mr. Kasim. There was a question about a possibility of there being any leases on the property.
Right.
Anybody else? All right, roll call.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fudrus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores? Yes.
Carrries eight zero.
Second, resolution from the Finance Committee is, at 10B, has to do with approving a construction contract for Rabbit's Foot Lodge. Title to this resolution is "A Resolution Authorizing a Construction Contract for Phase 2 of the Restoration of Rabbit Foot Lodge."
Yeah, Gary wants you, might have some questions for you. I know Wyman could not be here tonight.
We did Phase 2, which completed, rebuilt some portions of those parishes, we're working on all the openings of the house, painting the house. In completing Phase 2, we're also gonna be doing some log work. First round, we did all the log work, we'll have some more to do on that.
They had mentioned the gentleman doing the logs, when I went out to talk to him during Phase 1, he'd mentioned that acid wash, they may have to do that again before they stain. Do you, okay?
Yes, they're gonna have to clean everything again.
Okay.
Because of the way the shutters have been over in this different color, you won't notice it right now, but as soon as it rains, you'll see it, it's all light, it's gonna paint that, it'll be a light stain, it'll look like it's a paint job, it'll be carefully done, and then it'll be sealed back of that, but that's just a piece of the project. We publicly did it, in the Democratic's advice, which at the same time, put it in all the plant house. And so, we have three big conferences, we had three contractors, 10 of that conference, we got 10. Then, then, just, and the low bidder is actually the first phase contractor, and we get the same log subcontract, so everything's pretty positive.
I have a question, Mayor. What's our total cost thus far in renovation of Rabbit's Foot?
About 1 point.
One?
I'm sorry, wait. About 1.2.
Yeah, 1.2, that's Phase 1 and 2. Phase 1 was four something, and this one's seven something.
That's including this, right?
That would include this, yes.
Yeah, I wanted that for clarification.
Thanks, Mike. Anything else?
Are we anticipating anything else to be done?
Not as, I'll let Gary answer, but my understanding is this'll take care of the outsides.
It takes care of the outside, it doesn't help the inside.
And I think, Brian, we've discussed before, I think the inside would be probably wise to at least wait a while on a potential tenant to see what changes might be needed on the inside.
I agree.
Want to be sure, too, that included, I know that included in this price also is the additional work that we asked you to look into about doors for the garage, or for the carport, I guess it was, and I apologize for not having pictures of that, but it'll basically be two door, it'll look, I mean, it'll look right, it'll be... The building is on the national, of course, the national, but it's got conservation easement on it, and because of that, we can't just put a normal metal door on it. So it's a metal door, but it's clad with planks, real, real wood planks, so it blends in with it, so...
So it'll basically be two doors with a stretch of logs in between, breaking them up?
Right. It's two doors, and the reason we did that, one end of the opening is six foot four inch tall, the other end is six foot tall, six foot and three quarters, so we needed a little, we needed some help, so we had to play the architectural game of breaking the doors, it'll be logs in between, so like that.
Okay. Okay. Good. Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion. I don't think we have one.
I'll make a motion, the resolution pass.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Fudrus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right. Jeff, item 11, Police and Fire Committee Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight in person. We have, for 11A, we have a resolution to appropriate funds for the purchase of two fingerprint units for the Police Department from Justice Assistance Grant and Drug Seizure Fund forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval, and I believe Chief Peters was there to present this for us.
Go ahead, Chief.
Good evening. Our current fingerprint machines that we have are, we've had them for a long time, I don't know how long, more than 10 years. The company doesn't exist any longer. They have a lot of maintenance issues, and they break down a lot, and we no longer have a way to fix them. We need to get two fingerprint machines. We were able to get a Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $25,000. The total, I'm sorry, of $21,000. The total cost of this is 25, so I propose that we pay the difference out of our drug seizure fund.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fudrus?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, Brian, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. We're at 11B, and a resolution certifying an understanding of using a cash flow model for a small group in the order to increase the benefits for recipients of the Fireman's Pension Fund, a pension and relief fund pursuant to Arkansas Code. of the Fireman's Pension Fund, a Pension and Relief Fund pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 2411102 and Rule 4 of the Arkansas Fire and Police Pension Review Board. This was forwarded to committee with recommendation for approval. And I believe Ernest is gonna present this tonight.
This is, allows the individuals who are on the old retirement plan, I think there's 37 individuals on this old plan. And it would increase the benefits being paid under that. And the statute and the Arkansas Fire and Police Pension Review Board requires both the fund and the city council to adopt the approval of this. So that's why it's before you.
How much of an increase is there?
It is...
Yeah, going from 1% to what? From 80 to 90%.
Which is in line with the new one, right? With the new retirement program.
With lot fee? That I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. That's what the police pension gets now, though, 90%.
Yeah, on the old police, it's the same as the old police plan.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're confident the financial whizzes have assured us that that's gonna remain in good shape. Did we get a motion?
Move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Denise?
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Figerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. Is there, are there any comments from council? City Attorney.
No, sir.
I have nothing. Motion to adjourn. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.